Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing. The Special Board of Alderman meeting, I'm sorry, Monday, March 25th, 2019 at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. Prayer will be offered by City Clerk Patricia Piazu and Alderman Dowd will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have a high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with the spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens, so help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Gidge. Alderman Harriet Gathwright. Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Clea. Alderman Laws.
Here.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderwoman Malizey Gola.
Present.
Alderman Tenza.
Present.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
We have eleven members present. Also in attendance, we have the Honorable Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. At this point, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Alderman Dowd.
We're holding a public hearing on R. 19114, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $6 million for the Phase III lined landfill expansion of the Nashville Four Hills landfill to include engineering services. Is there someone that would like to just come up and briefly explain what this is going to entail?
Jeff LaFleur Superintendent, solid waste. The Phase III landfill is about a six acre parcel that we're gonna be building into our new landfill. It's needed because we're running out of airspace that we currently have. We're actually building ourselves into a pyramid where we're running out of space. We can still capture airspace in the Phase I and II, but we need to build the Phase III to bring us up to level, so we have a working area to work on.
Does anyone have any questions before we take testimony? Seeing none, I'll now take testimony in favor of R. 19114. Seeing no one, I'll now take testimony in opposition to R. 19114. Once again, I'll ask for testimony in favor of R. 19114. And testimony in opposition, R. 19114. Seeing none, do I hear a motion? Alderman Wiltshire?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned at 7:05. To order, it's Monday, March 25th, 2019, 7:07, and we're in the Aldermanic Chamber. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman at large, Laurie Wiltshire.
Here.
Alderman at large, Ben Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman at large, Michael O'Brien is present. Alderwomen at large, Hushana Kelly.
Here.
Alderman at large, David Tenza.
Present.
Alderman Jan Schmidt.
Here.
Also in attendance is Alderman Jettie. Alderman Lopez. And I think that should do it.
Chair.
Okay. And the chair, Richard A. Dowd.
Present.
Okay. The first order of business for our meeting this evening will be public comment. Would anyone like to comment on tonight's budget meeting?
Okay, my name is Fred Tibum. I reside at 24 Cheyenne Drive. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, very good. I picked up a copy of the budget, and the first thing I did is look for the calculation of the spending cap in this budget. And this is here. If you have a copy in front of you, you won't find it. Now, I don't know why it's not there. I do know that Attorney Bolton and Mayor Donches declared the spending cap inoperative. The Superior Court case, specifically under Note Number Nine of its decision, stated that it did not find the spending cap invalid, because there's never been a hearing on the spending cap validity during a court case. It dismissed the case. Did not find the spending cap invalid. Now, we're gonna be in the Supreme Court on 18 April, so I won't debate illegality here. That'll be debated in the Supreme Court on the 18th April. We dispute the dismissal of the case. Meanwhile, you have an ordinance, Ordinance 5-145, that requires you to put in a budget, and any supplemental budget, to compute the spending cap, unless the amount of the budget above and below the cap. That page is not here. You're violating the ordinance. Beyond that, it would be very instructive to know whether the budget before you, in fact, is below or above the spending cap. And the mayor talks about 3% tax rate is trying to stay below. The City of Nashville does not compute the tax rate. Approximately $2 million represent a percent change, because the tax levy is about $200 million. But that's not upon the spending cap. Upon the spending cap is decide whether you're above or below the cap. Now, I happen to be in the school board budget, and so, Mr. Chairman, were you? And one of the teachers, in fact, the lead petition that has put the change index into the cap, stated he wished that the cap calculation were in here, because he claimed, I've not verified it, it's intended to verify it by the time you have your public hearing, this is in particular, but he claimed that the index in the spending cap is actually above what the budget increase is. Now, I don't know what he based that opinion on. He talked about 2.43% the school budget. The index is calculated on average of three years, as you know, it's based on the IDP, implicit price deflator, not CPU. The implicit price deflator has actually run below the CPU historically. Not sure where it stands this year. I intend to compute that, I haven't had a chance to compute it yet. Nevertheless, this Budget Committee does not have the benefit of the calculation. Beside the fact that the Ordinance 5-145 requires you to put it in the budget, so what I'm asking you, Mr. Chairman, is that you direct CFO Griffin, I don't know if he's here or not. Is he here? He's not here, well, Mr. Faddeh is here. Did he hand you a supplementary sheet with the spending cap calculation and thereby meet his ordinance? If you don't believe me, ask City Attorney what his opinion is about the Superior Court decision by Dutch Temple. But I'm telling you, footnote night, he very specifically said he does not find the spending cap invalid. Thank you.
Okay, two things. One, we'll ask, the Finance Department will be going before us this evening, so the question will be asked. The other is, I believe that the discussion on the cap at the school board was the school board budget, not the city budget, so. Okay. Any other public comment? Okay. Communications?
There is none.
Unfinished business?
None.
New business?
There is none.
R. 18102, still table in committee. I have not heard any new information on that. So that's still on the table. Alderman O'Brien.
Before us this evening is R. 19114, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $6 million for the Phase III lined landfill expansion of the Nashville Four Hills landfill to include engineering services. Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to recommend final passage.
Okay, it says here that was tabled. If that was tabled, we have to take it off the table first.
Okay, then I would like to make a motion, take it off the table.
Sounds good. Okay, motion on the floor is to take R. 19114 from the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Now, I would like to make my motion for final passage.
Okay. The motion on the floor is to recommend final passage to the full board of R. 19114. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Tonight, we will be discussing the budget items relative to general government. There's one of the items, revenue is on Page 32, and the city clerk comes up, and we'll go through the appropriations one at a time. Would the mayor's office like to kick this off?
I thought I might take this opportunity, just to, because I haven't appeared before the Budget Committee regarding the budget before, to give you an overview of what I think is in the budget, if you don't mind. First of all, there are some issues that obviously you should be considering. I gave the major departments the budget guideline of 2.25%. Of course, that's difficult, given their needs and the things they would like to do to meet that guideline, but we are faced this year with a major expense, unfortunately. The cost of health care for city employees is rising, and the projections are done by a professional consulting firm we have that projects forward future, next year's health care costs. They project that we will see an 11% or about a $3 million increase. This is a lot of money, of course, for the city. That $3 million represents that figure alone, with no other increases in the budget, 1.5% tax increase. So that leaves us in a position where if we are going to try to keep a tax increase below, at or below 3%, we need to be very careful with the rest of the budget. So those are the parameters that we begin with. The budget, as I've proposed it, would hit the tax, hit the 3% or less tax increase that, at least I'm saying, is the maximum that I think people can afford. Some of the things that you will see in the budget are that I did reduce the request of the school department, the fire department, and police. With respect to the school department, I did add into contingency, in addition to the 2.25%, $200,000, which is labeled for school priorities, which I intend to be, at least in my mind, for ELL teachers. And if the Budget Committee agrees with that approach, the Board of Alderman can either transfer that money to them as part of the budget process, or wait until the budget is over and then make a transfer at that time. But I'm proposing that we try to at least shape the thinking of the school department, and this is basically their thinking, as well as to where the highest need is, in addition to the 2.25%. Some of the things that you'll see in the budget are the energy manager for the first time. The school department used to have an energy manager, that got phased out, but there are many projects in the city and in the school department where we could save substantial amounts of energy. For example, there's at least one rough estimate out there that the school department could save $125,000 a year in each high school by converting to LED. Now, that is not a cheap project. Each school would cost, in the neighborhood, maybe more, maybe less, of a million dollars. But an energy manager would be able to go in and work with the school department and define that project in great detail, so that it can be put out to bid in a very specific manner, and so that we can achieve the greatest amount of savings with the most effective use of our invested dollars, and in detailed discussions with the users of the schools, decide how the project should be modeled to both meet their needs and save as much energy as possible. We, of course, have 17 total schools, and high schools being the biggest, but there are many projects that could be done in the schools. City would need to invest in these projects, but over the long term, certainly there would be a payback. These things can't be done well without an energy manager, and this is a position that I think would more than pay for itself as the years go on, in terms of designing projects and managing projects and saving the city energy, and also reducing the greenhouse gases which we generate as a city institution. Another thing that you will, and that appears on Page 116. Another thing that you will mention, you will see, is that the Administrative Services Director, which I have spoken to you about before, appears on Page 76. The audit done by Ms. Kleiner, and I don't know why she's not up here, but she's there in the audience, so maybe Ms. Kleiner should come forward, and John Griffin, the CFO, they recommended that we take a number of steps regarding the assessing function, but one of them was to substitute the position of Administrative Services Director for the assessing manager. It's roughly a cost-neutral step, and we have said that if more management supervision is required in the assessing department as time goes on, and as we work very carefully with that department, and believe me, we are working very carefully with them, the KRT can be hired to come in and help manage the department and provide assessing oversight and supervision. When we did go out to hire a chief assessor last time, we got only one significant applicant. Maybe, you know, the job pays in the 90s, a fairly good salary, but still only one applicant. So that is part of the reason that it seems that using people who are in the field all the time, KRT, would work in terms of providing supervision when we need it on a consulting basis. They do that for a number of other communities in New Hampshire. Another position that I wanted to add, but somehow it got left out of the budget, I've talked to Dr. Mosley about jointly hiring a grant writer, working for schools and city. We think that position would cost about $60,000. They, the school department, has put in 30. Our half would, of course, be 30. It was something we discussed right at the end, and we thought it made it into the budget, but it didn't, so we're gonna send you a letter proposing an amendment to the budget to add our half of that position, because, again, we think that that position could pay for itself probably many times over, if we had a skilled grant writer. Finally, the community center is in the budget. The director of community center, that's on Page 86. Last year, that was funded through a combination of escrowed funds and community development block grant funds. That is a community development block grant eligible expense, but when we went before the budget, when we went before Human Affairs, I think, last time, and Human Affairs funded that position in part, we said that in the following years, we would attempt to do it through city funds, so that position appears in this budget for the first time, although the position was created and funded through, I think, through escrow and through CDBG last year, or this current year in fiscal 19. Finally, as it pertains to the mayor's office, there is a summer intern program in there, where, again, we used, last year, we used escrowed funds for that. We, last year, had 13 high school juniors come into city government across the departments, engineering, public works, one person in the mayor's office, or two people, but each with a half a job, economic development, planning, and elsewhere. The reviews from the students and the parents and the teachers who were involved were very strong, so we thought we should continue with that program. Again, that was escrowed funds last year, and this year, it's just in the budget so we can get started and hire the kids for July 1. It's a great experience for them, and I think it just helps the city as far as summer help and just understanding and assisting a group of young people in gathering the skills that they need to later succeed in life. As far as the salaries in the mayor's office, it looks like the increase is more than it should be, because the raises that were part of the merit plan were left out of last year's budget, so the last year's budget did not really reflect what the salaries were last, I keep saying last year. Last year is fiscal 19, this year. But the budget for the salaries for fiscal 19 this year were not fully budgeted, the salaries that were in place, and the merit increases that take place on an employee's anniversary. So the increase looks like it is more than it really is. The difference was made up in attrition, and you will see that when you review the budget. Really, there are no other changes in the mayor's office, other than the internship program, which appeared elsewhere last time, and everything else is really the same, and Chief of Staff Ms. Kleiner can fill you in on any other details that I haven't covered. But I think, and one final thing, the community center director wanted to come to the Budget Committee, so she could talk to you about what she's up to, and you can hear what's happening there. She's in a master's program at Suffolk, I believe, and tonight is one of her classes, so we were hoping we could schedule her for another night when she's not at school, so she could go to school and still appear here and talk to you about her activities. I think you will enjoy meeting her. Some of you already have. Her name is Megan Karen. She's had some very good experience leading into this position, and therefore, I was hoping, you know, I really want to make sure that she can come in and you can hear firsthand what is going on and what she's doing over at the community center. So I think that, do we have anything you want to add? There are other budgets that we're gonna cover, but that's at least the mayor's office, and...
So we'll go one at a time, but we can take Department 110 and hold it to another meeting.
Okay.
Okay. On the Department 101, the mayor's office, are there any questions? Alderman O'Brien.
Yes, I would like to ask the mayor, if I may. Reflection of the merit, I see what you were saying was in last year's, and that's true with all division directors in last year's budget as well, not just your office, when we look at the, let's say, anybody else who works for the city that's in the merit system. That didn't necessarily get dragged over, correct?
Well, in this budget, the situation was, what other term? There was an error in what was proposed last year, unlike the other departments, so it goes a little further than that, in that the raises, the work that are annual but on anniversary, will not include it in last year's budget, and therefore, last year's budget didn't actually capture what people's salaries, fully what people's salaries were. I keep saying last year, it's this year, fiscal year. This year didn't capture what the salaries actually were, and so the increase appears to be more than it would otherwise have been.
Okay, but just for, follow.
Yes, follow.
For clarity, it's not just your division that goes to...
Correct.
Public Works and Fire and Police or whatever, right?
Ours is more pronounced because the budget, even the merit increase issues were not fully captured in the current fiscal 19 budget.
Any other questions on the mayor's office? Okay, then we'll move on to Administrative Services. Department 106, the appropriations are on Page 75.
This is the administrative services position that we spoke about.
Mm-hmm.
75 and 76.
So, okay, so we're looking at a salary of 107, 295, and with benefits, 153, 816, well, roughly.
The ordinance authorizing this position, it's in the budget, but it needs to be authorized by the Board of Aldermen, and the ordinance that would do that goes to the Personnel Committee on Monday. So...
Okay.
So the decision will be made on that before you get to the final consideration of the budget.
So with the understanding that this hasn't been finalized yet, are there any questions relative to this department? Alderman Lopez.
I'm just curious about the one-dollar items, is that just to keep those, those items open if we ever do put more money in?
Yes, yeah, it's still that, those line items are there in case you ever want to transfer any money into that. It's less red tape, so to speak, if you have the, the line item already there.
I was excited about the one-dollar phone bill.
Yes. Well, office supplies, one dollar, furniture and fixtures, one dollar, so I guess we'll have to use a used desk or something.
We, we've repeatedly done that when we have a line item that at some point may need to have funds put against it, we put it in there for a dollar, so it's a holding place, and it's easier than going back and adding a line later. Any other questions on Administrative Services? Okay. The next department is 109, Civic Community Activities, Other Services Outside Agencies and Equipment, on page eighty-two.
Of course, for this, we have the Citizen Advisory Committee. What I've done is simply give them, given them a bottom-line figure, and then they have reviewed proposals from these various agencies and have allocated funds, and I've simply followed their recommendations as to how the funds should be allocated.
Alderman Tenzo.
It's not necessarily a question, just a request. You know, last year, we had some comment afterwards about these funds and how they were awarded out, just based on the committees, the notes that they took. There's not a ton of information from the notes, and I was wondering if, at some point in this process, we could just, there's some indication that there are other, some input from the people who reviewed the, the applications, if those could be made available, so we could briefly take a look at them before we decide this.
Susan Wilshire, who's the automatic liaison to that?
Alderman Karen.
Ah, so we can get some feedback from her.
Thank you.
One question I have is, on line 56211, holiday stroll, it's eighteen thousand, that's because that doesn't fit in the police department's budget anymore?
Well, they are, they are, I should have mentioned that, they are dealing with a lot of overtime issues, and of course, they want to put as many people on the street as they possibly can, and it just seemed to me that, given that I had not completely met their request, that we should relieve them of the obligation of spending part of their overtime money on the holiday stroll and instead separately appropriate the money, so the holiday stroll goes ahead, but it doesn't crimp the police department budget. As you know, the cost of this thing has gone, the cost of all public events have risen dramatically in recent years because of greater concern, greater security concerns. So we have more police officers and on duty and throughout the downtown when the downtown stroll is taking place, and so the cost has risen quite a bit, and for those reasons, I separately indicated it in the budget.
This is probably one of the biggest events in the entire state of New Hampshire.
Correct, and certainly the biggest event in Nashua.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much for that, and now we'll skip 110, go to 102, which is the Board of Aldermen, and that's on page sixty-nine, appropriations rather. Please identify yourselves, so the transcriptionists won't have to lean over and touch you and say what's your name.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, my name is Susan Lovering, Legislative Affairs Manager for Department 102, Board of Aldermen. Just briefly, other than the step increase in the merit employees and a $500 decrease in outside scenographic services, we're level funding our budget as we have in past years. Ms. Parkett has been with us now for over a year and possesses excellent transcription skills. She's also acquired a vast amount of knowledge of the legislative process in a short period of time. I believe the budget in front of you allows us to continue to provide the services to the board that we currently do, and President Wilshire and I are pleased to submit this, which is under the 1.75% guideline of Mayor Donas. And that's the snapshot.
Any questions on the Board of Aldermen budget? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next department is the Legal Department, on seventy, page seventy-one. Want to do it from there?
Everyone can see me except you.
Wow.
Well, basically, the salaries went up according to the merit system formula. I made a few adjustments here and there, but the total expenditure, other than in the salary and benefits, stayed level. As of the end of February, which is approximately two-thirds of the way through the year, we were right on target. We had spent about sixty-one and a half percent of the budget allocated for 2019 fiscal year, so if things don't go up a great deal higher, we can get by with that level funding on these other expenses.
Okay, questions on legal? Thank you. Next is Department 111, Human Resources, on page eighty-seven.
Mr. Budrow is going to handle Human Resources and the benefits.
Good evening, Chairman. Larry Budrow, Human Resources Director.
Okay. So if you could just give us an overview of your budget, particularly any increases or decreases, things that stay the same are pretty well flat, but...
Salaries increased. We are all in what we're now calling the unaffiliated employee group. All of the non-salary costs went down about $1,000 for Human Resources. Human Resources comprised of two functional specialties, payroll and Human Resources Administration.
The wages full-time went up about 30,000, is that just because increases weren't taken into account, or is this staffing increase?
So those, those are the, those are the increases for seven and a half people.
Okay. And I noticed that the conferences and seminars reduced 3,200, just fewer conferences and...
So the two, the two lines, 55, 400 for conferences and seminars, and the following line, 55, 421, employer training and certifications. I learned as I was doing the budgeting that the, the first one, 55, 400, was an account set up especially for conferences related to the Lawson legacy computer system or enterprise computer system. We had, Chairman Dodd, you may recall, when I first arrived here a few years ago, we were in a real calamity about that, and we spent a lot of money for consulting, but we now have a competent group, so I thought we could safely reduce that down quite a bit.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions? Alderman Tenzo.
Mr. Budrow, we've mentioned it a couple of times tonight about the merit increase that we passed late last year. For most employees, how much of a increase in their salary will it be?
For most employees, this year it will be 5.7%, which is a, adding together, a 4% step, and the, and adjusting the salary grid by the three-year trailing average of the CPI U Northeast, which is going to be 1.7%.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'll ask this to Mr. Budrow or anyone who's been here longer than I have. The last time that we did something like this for our unaffiliated employees was, it's not something that happens all the time, I guess is my point. And this increase was a long time coming for the folks?
Yeah, we hadn't touched the unaffiliated schedule for quite some time, so we just did that this past year, but I don't remember exactly when that was, but adjusted all of the levels.
I just have another follow-up. Thank you. We've also heard in, in the budget this year, the biggest increase is coming from healthcare costs in, I'm not sure if you're the correct person to ask, but can you just tell us a little bit more about that? Was it, is it unexpected, is it industry-wide, that, that healthcare costs are rising, or is there another reason that it's costing the city more money?
So I'm, I'm prepared to do that tonight, and I can just jump, I could jump into that now, or it's going to be the next section of tonight's discussion.
You can wait then.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Any other questions, Human Resources? All right, seeing none. Next is Department 113, Benefits. Now you can ask that question, it's page ninety. I'm sorry, you, yeah, Benefits is ninety, page ninety. So I think the big question everybody's mind is, okay, the health went up $3 million, a little over $3 million, $3,78,446, if I have my math right. So what drove that?
Chairman, I brought an exhibit. I'm not sure if I brought quite enough copies, but may I distribute them?
Sure.
If you need it. Oh, okay, well, I could.
You can probably make, make some of those. Sure.
Workplace Benefit Solutions, WBS, is a consultant that has worked with the city in its self-funded insurance plans, perhaps since their inception, but certainly since I've been here. And this is their exhibit for what we refer to here as the working rates, which if we were fully insured, would be premiums. In our case, they're not actually premiums, we're not paying that money outside the city. And I, I brought you this mostly just so that you can all drop your eyes down to the bottom right corner. And so what WBS is recommending, and they have plenty of data to support this, they have an underwriter who does this work for them, and we meet with them regularly, is that the requirements to fund the health plan this year, that's administration and claims, are going to be $46 million. And you can see that they were $41 million for 2019. So that, I think, directly speaks to the question of why the increase, and, you know, self-insured plans, you can win and you can lose, and for a number of years, back until about two years ago, we had a pretty flat run for several years, and we were beating or we were experiencing less claims than the industry. All the insurance companies calculate what they call medical trend, they just, fact, they keep track of their claims from one year to the next, to the next, to the next, and they calculate the percentage increases and they publish those, and for the first few years that I was here, we were way below. We were actually had flat increases for a couple of years, and then small ones. And this year, we're up significantly, 11%.
My question is, when they did their analysis, did they do it on just the city workers, or is it the larger base?
Well, they're doing it on the city and school, so they're doing it on all of the covered employees, and they're taking, I really can't speak to underwriting, but it's, they take, they go back several, I think about eighteen months, and they use that data to try to project forward.
And did we not have a special enterprise fund that had money in it that we were using to sort of upset healthcare costs if necessary, which...
There is a self-insurance fund. All of the, all of the revenue and costs that we're addressing when we're talking about the benefits are in the benefit self-insurance fund.
Okay, do we know what the balance is right now?
I know the balance as of the, the end of last fiscal year, it was, it was $7.6 million as of last June 30.
And do you have any insight into, as to why the claims have gone up this past year and are projected to continue to go up next year?
I've got, well, I, yes, I have two different types of insights. First is that in a smaller group, we are privy to claims utilization reviews, and we meet with members of the Anthem organization, and we talk about what's happening with claims and trying to figure out where we might go in terms of promoting wellness activities or how we might incent other behavior. There have been, for the last several years, many claims, many, five to 10 claims that exceed $350,000, one of the high, I believe the highest was $700,000. And basically what's happening, I, I spent a moment researching just what's happening everywhere, and the, the United States spent three and a half trillion dollars on healthcare in 2017, which is $11,000 for every single person. And the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services, the government agency that administers Medicare and Medicaid, and therefore is presumably pretty authoritative, assumes that's going to be $6 trillion by 2027, and they anticipate a five and a half percent increase year after year in healthcare. And if you, if you Google it, what it jumps to is, you know, half of the people in this room, it's the baby boomers, we have an aging population, at the same time that there are more and more expansive, effective drugs that can treat people, there are more and more procedures, more and more equipment, and, you know, healthcare costs are just likely to keep going like this. In fact, they have been going like this all the time, that, all for the last several years. We just, we enjoyed, as a little small microcosm, some good experience, and we're not enjoying that anymore.
Okay. Questions?
Just one word of explanation, the 46 million you see on the page is the entire cost of healthcare. We've spoken of the 33, the difference is what the employees... The difference is what the employees pay as part of their contribution towards healthcare and all their co-pays and all that kind of thing. So the total cost of the insurance is 40-some million, the city's portion is 33 million.
Alderman Denso, do you still have a question?
So if the projection is that this is going to increase by 5.5% each year from now on, and we've been lucky the last couple of years, it's not a question for this budget, but should we be looking for some other solution, or looking to put money aside maybe to offset the cost of healthcare in the future, so we're not hit with this increase every year?
Mr. Boudreau?
And this is just a...
I'm not a financial person, but I think that we can anticipate that costs are going to increase at this sort of level for years, and how that money is raised, or if the city tries to take some efforts to reduce the increase of that cost, which would essentially come through cost sharing, which cannot be done quickly or easily in this organization because of the, we don't have the freedom to change these plans without negotiating. So from a financing standpoint, I'll leave it to other people to help, but in terms of what to expect, I think that a $3 million increase next year is as likely as it was this year.
Alderman Lopez?
I'll ask a dark question. How long is this baby boomer thing going to continue? Because I literally don't know the projected timeframe, so I'm thinking, is this something we should, with the landfill, for example, like, and recycling, like, should we look at trying to get over a hump, or is this something that, like, this is the new status quo?
Well, of course, as the baby boomers get older, they leave employment, so the city wouldn't necessarily be involved once the baby boom generation goes by. I mean, Medicare, Medicare covers most of those people, so...
That's why the question's a little dark.
One thing that Personnel Larry is trying, Mr. Boudreau is trying to do is to encourage people to move to the high deductible plan. So there's a plan that has a deductible of $3,000 a year. The incentive for the employee to enter that plan is that they get a cash payment of $2,500? The deductible is four and the cash payment is three. So if you agree to enter the deductible plan, the high deductible plan, you get a cash, you get cash into your account, your healthcare account, at the beginning of the year of $3,000. And if you do not use that against healthcare costs, you get to keep the money in your account. And in addition, the benefits, it helps people also have heavy, heavy actual use because their co-pays are less. So for many people, they can manage this in a way that their balance accumulates over time, and they may end up after a few years with $5,000 or $6,000 or $7,000 in their account, enough to cover the deductible for, in its entirety, for a year or two, and they would, their account would continue to be replenished. Now, the advantage for the city of the high deductible plan is that it is growing, because people get more involved in managing their own healthcare costs under that plan, the cost for each employee that's in that plan is rising at a lower rate than the employees who are not in that plan. And so it seems like, for various reasons, that is a plan that can save many employees and the city money. People do build up these balances in their account, and then if they leave city employment, they can take that with them.
Alderman Jettie.
Looking at your, the thing that you handed out?
Yes.
The, at the bottom in the middle, it says $41 million. Is that, is that the total that we paid out for claims?
No. That is last year's estimate that we used for the working rates for fiscal 19. So that was established a year ago, and it was, and that's the basis for which we created the city employee cost shares. And I do not have, I do not have claims numbers for fiscal 19. If I fumble around here for a sec, I do have claims.
So basically, that was the total estimated cost, which was made last year at this point, in other words, in 2018 at this point, for fiscal 19. So the estimate was that all healthcare costs would be about, would be $41 million for all employees for fiscal 19, the current fiscal year. That's where the 40, that's what the 41 million is. And that shared, a shared number, mostly the city, but a good portion by the employees through their contributions to the, their monthly contribution as well as the co-pays and all, and the other contributions they make.
Follow-up from Alderman Jettie?
Please. So we don't know for fiscal 19, we don't know how much we've paid out.
Well, we know how much we've paid out through a certain, through a certain date, but...
Right, but not, not...
Not through the end of the year, because we haven't gotten there yet.
Do we know what we paid out the year before fiscal 18?
Yes, but I don't know if we have that figure, but certainly that's easily available. If, you know, of course, it's all an estimate, so one issue that arises, if we underestimate, then the healthcare, the balance in the healthcare trust fund that you heard about, that goes down. And we're at about $7 million, $6, $7 million, so given that we're spending 40-some million in total on healthcare each year, we need to maintain some balance there, so there's a cushion. Things go, you know, seriously worse than we anticipate, there's a balance there to help cover it, and the, that's what the, that's what the trust fund does.
And I do have the claims, if you like. The claims last year were $38,300,000, that was for fiscal 18. The claims this year are projected to be $41,800,000.
Okay, so if, my rough calculation, if the number of enrollees is 2,132, roughly that's like 20,000 per person in, or per enrollee in claims. I don't know if, it sounds like a lot to me, but...
May I, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So there are about 5,000, 5,100 people, because it's the employees that are being counted here on this piece of paper, and when they add their dependents, and we also have about 1,000 retirees who, because of RSA 100, have a right to what is like COBRA. If you retire from a municipality in New Hampshire, you can continue the group health insurance of your prior employer until age 65. And so some of the, in addition to the premiums that the employees are sharing, we're also receiving premiums 100% of these rates from retirees. So there's really 5,000 members for that math.
Yeah, and may I? And that's only till 65, and what happens at 65? They go onto Medicare?
At 65, they go onto Medicare, and if they choose, the city also offers a program called Medicare Advantage. That, however, unlike everything else we've talked about, is a fully insured plan, and so we're just passing the premiums through.
So it's not the baby boomers, Alderman Lopez, that are causing the problem?
Hopefully, they're healthy.
In terms of the amount that's spent in any year, that is not really determined ultimately for a little bit of time after the year is out, because it's done on a accrual basis. So if someone, you know, went to the doctor in June 20th of a fiscal year, 10 days left, that bill doesn't come in until after the fiscal year is over, but is settled with funds appropriated for that fiscal year. So you don't actually get the count, the full count for the year until sometime after the year is over.
Alderman Kelly?
Thank you. So for clarification, the updates that we have here are an estimate based on current enrollment, is that correct?
Yes.
So in the situation that the mayor was talking about, where we're incentivizing people to move to the higher deductible plan, if, do we have an estimate of how many people might do that, and if that'll save us any money?
Mr. Boudreau?
Well, we don't know how many people will go. We can't say that. We, we're at 415 as of the date of this. I understood that as of yesterday, we were at 423. We started this plan a couple of years ago, it was as low as 150, I think, two years ago. We are having some meetings now, because I'll just, I'll toss into this conversation two things that, one thing specifically that we did is, we've had two carriers for many, many years here, the old Harvard Pilgrim Health Plan, which became Health Plans Incorporated last fiscal year, and Anthem. And this year, we've consolidated all plans to only Anthem, and that reduced our administrative cost by about $400,000 from what it would have been. So we're having special meetings at this school and throughout the city. There are about 250 people who will have to make a change if they choose to stay with the city's insurance. And Ms. Kelly, the, there seems to be quite a bit of excitement, a lot of questions at those meetings about the high deductible health plans. I think there's momentum.
Thank you.
Alderman Denso?
Just one quick follow-up about the high deductible plan, too. So if people enroll in that year after the year, do they get the $3,000 in the health savings account each year?
Yes, each July.
So someone who stays with the city for 20 years could have $60,000 to spend on healthcare once they retire, already in the bank, basically?
Potentially. That assumes they never spent any of it, but they, you know, some people will be fortunate enough to retire with money in the health savings account.
But they do have the $4,000 deductible, so if you go to the doctor for $100, you have to pay that out of pocket or out of your account. So if you spend $3,000 on healthcare, you end up with nothing in the account. But where some people benefit is if they spend $2,000 or $1,000, then there's a balance left in their account.
If I may just follow up, the $3,000 is whether you're an individual or whether you got a family?
$1,500 for a family, $3,000 for two-person and family. The reason it's the same for two-person and family is that the deductible is the same.
So you're all familiar with healthcare costs. The minute you step in a doctor's office or a hospital, that number's going down fast. Alderman Jettie, did you have a follow-up?
Yes. So you talk about insurance, but we're self-insured, aren't we?
Yes.
So what are the, when you talk about Anthem and this other successor to Harvard Pilgrim, what do they do?
So they are, they're acting as our third-party administrator. To the best of my knowledge, any organization that has a self-funded health insurance plan contracts with another organization to do the work, the claims processing, claims verification, and that's what Anthem and HPI are doing for us. So our costs are a combination, there's actually two lines on the budget. One is claims administration fee, and the other is actual claims.
Follow-up?
And have we, have we looked at what it would, I know at some point in the past, we decided that being self-insured was better for us financially. Are we, do we look at that every year to determine, is this, is this the right thing for us to be doing as opposed to buying insurance, as opposed to being self-insured?
We do. It's pretty easy to do, because most municipalities in the state are insured through health trust. Health trust used to be associated with an municipal association, now it's a standalone. But it is, it is a large, actually, a self-insured risk pool of a grander scale, with many municipalities and schools participating. And they've, I've been seeing their premiums for years, and we have been doing favorably. Our costs have been favorable right along.
I was around when the transition, I think around the time the transition was being made, because the, you know, some years ago, decades ago, really, the city used to buy insurance, you know, pay, pay an insurance company, and of course, they build in a profit, and they don't lose money, or they try not to, so they, they, in the end, charge you more than the cost of the actual premiums, because they're hedging against their risk. And at the time, the city ended up saving quite a bit of money, you know, in that, in those days, a couple million dollars by going self-insured. And the pool that Larry is talking about is really a similar thing. It's a self-insured, but a larger group. If you went to some health insurance company and asked for premium quotes, I'm sure, you know, I think you'd get a lot more than $46 million for the total cost.
Okay, a little second, everyone? Thank you, Mr. Boudreau.
Thank you.
And somehow I skipped over the city clerk. If she could come up now, please. And the city clerk, the revenues, which are always good, are on page 32, and the appropriations are on page 77.
Hi, good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Patricia Pietz, so I'm the city clerk. And if you want to take the revenues first, we can definitely do that. Overall, if you look at the revenues, you'll see that I did decrease line item in the vendor licenses and everything, but otherwise than that, overall, I am looking to give a little over $6,000 in additional revenues based on what we're experiencing currently with the office and everything like that, what we, what our actual was last year. But on that note as well, for the dog licensing, we're hoping that we're, in the process of going over a major conversion, it's been three and a half months, it's been a very long process, a little difficult process to go through, in trying to convert 1,000 records out of our old admin system. We were hoping to go live today, I was hoping to give you that news tonight, but we're hoping to go live by the end of the week. We are doing what we call soft launch right now, so we're hoping to see where that is, and hopefully that will help us, because we still have a lot of dogs that are not licensed for last year, and we're hoping that this will help us in offering our residents an online service to be able to register their dogs online. But again, with anything that we collect revenues for the dog licensing or vital records, we also still have to give monies to the state on these records as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on revenues.
Any questions on revenues? Alderman Kelly?
Thank you. Parking permit fees, is that parking lots? What's, what is that?
I'm sorry?
Is that the parking permit fees?
That's the overnight parking fees.
Okay, so it wouldn't be adjusted by if we switch the ordinance that we're talking about, which is the monthly? That's someone else's budget.
That is correct.
Thank you. That was my question.
Okay. The appropriations are on page 77.
So now on to the regular budget. So unfortunately, my budget could not come in at the mayor's requested rate of only 1.75, and that was only, would have been like a $7,400 increase. With three elections next year, one being the presidential primary, as well as the 110th city inauguration, my budget's coming in at 14.5% or $61,000 over the requested amount. Being such a very small department, there's not $61,000 I would have been able to take out of any line items, not unless I looked at laying off anybody, someone, personnel in my office, but if you look on page 78, you'll see all the things that we do in our office, and that'd be very difficult to do. So with the presidential primary next year, the costs associated with that, I am pegging at $53,366, about 88% of the budget increase. But again, we have the municipal elections next year as well, so we have to account for the printing of the ballots. And of course, with the 110th inauguration, I was able, that is in the line... And of course, with the hundred and tenth inauguration, I was able, that is in the line item that deals with, so that's in the line item, other contracted services, and I was able to reduce that line item, but still have to increase that line item because of our taxi drivers, we've lost a company and everything like that, we're not having as many drivers, we've, we only have, right now, two taxi cab companies in the city, so we're not having as much drug testing, because we don't have as many drivers. So we're able to reduce that part of the budget, but by adding in the inauguration, it put that line over three thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. So I'd be happy to go through the other lines that are over, if you would like to do that, some of them are salaries, which, again, are without my control between the unaffiliated and/or the mayor, or the UAW contracts. And then we had the over, I'm looking for additional overtime, again, we have those three elections, so there's a lot more processing that we'll be doing with ballots and stuff, so that.
Yeah, just for the new Alderman, the city clerk's budget does go up and down based on number of elections during the year, so we have a year with fewer elections, the budget goes down accordingly. So I saw Alderman Kelly, then Alderman at Lodge Clemens.
So my question is about wages, everyone else, we've seen like a step increase, but yours only went up by seven hundred, are you not affected by the increases that were implemented?
I really didn't pay attention to that.
No. My guess is there was some turnover in the city clerk's office, so that's probably, people came in at a lower, at a lower scale, that's just a guess, but there've been some new people in the last year or so.
Sure, I just want to make-
At the overall salary, I thought you said my, my, my salary, no, overall, yes.
Oh, no, I'm looking at wages full-time, yeah.
Time, yes, that is correct, what the mayor stated. We have new, three new staff from last year.
Fire, what's going on?
Yeah, that's a normal ringtone.
Is your phone melting down over there?
Hallelujah.
I think you answered my second question, if I could have a follow-up.
No, that's his.
Are we good? There's no fire? But I noticed that the-
I thought you retired from the fire.
All right.
Almost doubled, and I think you were talking-
Okay, Alderman Kelly?
Sorry.
Follow-up?
Follow-up?
Okay. I believe you answered my question, but I just want to clarify, so it looked like the wages in elections almost doubled, and I'm assuming that's overtime because of the additional elections, is that correct?
So the overtime is one line item where it's being increased by thirty-five hundred dollars, whereas the election officials, because of a presidential primary, I get to hire additional, I should say, the moderators will work with the moderators to hire additional personnel. So in lieu of having four ballot inspectors per ward, I'm able to hire up to twelve, the smallest ward would be ward four, where they get to have eight, and then most of the other wards between ten and twelve ballot inspectors per ward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Alderman Clemens?
Just want to say, you do an excellent job, and I, I'm going to fully support your budget, because I know that the, the numbers don't lie, you, you, you definitely do a great job every election, and the presidential primary is no exception, and, you know, I think the, the money that's in here is well-spent, because we're privileged to be the first in the nation primary, and, you know, we have to take that seriously, and I think, I think this budget does that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question, Alderman Lopez?
I have a question for Attorney Bolton. Is it even possible to tax or perhaps register political parties for the primary, since it's their primary?
You mean for us to do that locally?
Yeah.
No, it is not possible.
Alderman Jettie?
I noticed that under revenue, taxi and chauffeur licenses, you budgeted for three thousand, and you've only collected five hundred and six. Is that because there are fewer taxis?
Because we're not into our licensing season for that, we're just approaching, approaching our licensing season for that now. Most of our licenses are all, become due in April, that's when we'll start seeing the revenue.
Okay, so you, you still anticipate the three thousand that you've got budgeted, what about Uber and Lyft, are they licensed?
They are not licensed through us, state law passed, that will not, that allow, regulates that, and they have to be licensed through the Department of Transportation.
Okay, and we can't, there's no way for us to piggyback on that or collect some of that?
Unfortunately, no.
If we only knew a state legislator.
Yeah, I'm sure they'll be quick to knock out their own revenue generatings.
We should get half, don't you think? We should get half?
Yeah.
Maybe-
Well, they're-
Seventy-five, twenty-five.
Hey, why not all of it?
Well, all of it, I'll take that, too, that'd be great.
Right. Any other questions for the city clerk? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry for skipping over the-
That's okay, no problem.
Okay, the next department that we'll be discussing is one fifty-six, emergency management, and the appropriations are on page one sixty-five. Thought you were going to have to jump in action when you heard that alarm.
I know, I was wondering what that was.
That's that he ran out of the room, it was unbelievable.
I was, I was wondering what that was. All right, good evening. So our budget this year, the significant differences are expenses related to our part-time employee position. Over the last year, Matt Chigas from our office has been working off of some federal grants that we've been operating on, one being from EPA, another one being from FEMA, and we've been able to, to be pretty frugal with our part-time wages, because we've needed to move forward with the deliverables for those grants first, close those grants out. The challenge with that, though, is in order to keep that person at that thirty-four hours a week, there are no grants for that position for next year, so we'd like to try and ensure that that position stays funded at the, at the same level. With that, some expenses for mileage, training, and our travel expenses are more accurately, well, they're, they're put in so that the, they're more accurate for, for two positions. The last time that those, those, those line items were at those levels was fiscal year seventeen, and the reason we had those at, at those levels back in fiscal year seventeen was because we shifted money towards our part-time budget in fiscal year eighteen and continued that way in, in nineteen. Other than that, the other line items are, are the same. We did have slight reduction in software maintenance, we're working on the Code Red contract right now, but that is anticipated to, to be around the twenty-two thousand dollar a year range if we continue on with that service. And then the other, other line items are, are the same as they've been in previous years, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Alderman Kelly?
Yeah, I noticed that emergency preparedness almost doubled, can you talk about what you're anticipating there?
Yeah, so emergency preparedness was another line item back in fiscal year seventeen that we basically reduced to a very small amount to shift that towards the part-time position. That funding for emergency preparedness is typically used for any anticipated expenses that we might have from an incident during the year. So if we end up opening up a shelter and there's no federal disaster declaration, or we can get reimbursed for those costs, we might pull that out of that fund. Any expenses for feeding or any equipment or supplies that would be necessary during the year from an emergency, we would pull it out of the emergency preparedness fund. So it's a smaller amount, but we increase it so that it more accurately fits within the types of responses that we deal with throughout the year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and the-
So, Mr. Chair, we expected Mr. Mansfield on Citywide Communications, but he apparently is not here. He really should address you on that, so we need to reschedule that, and we'll make sure he's here the next time.
Okay.
And that's with that, that's all that we have got, unless you have other budget questions?
Any other questions for any of the departments that we covered? Alderman Jettie?
Going back to the administrative, the new administrative services position, the cost that you, that you've put into the budget for that, what, I know the assessors aren't before us tonight, but what, how, what reductions do you expect in the assessing department that would counterbalance this new position?
Well, the audit, which we've spoken about before, recommended the elimination of the chief assessor's position, which has been, at least now, been done. So the, the salary offset is about the same, the assessor's position paid in the, somewhere in the higher nineties, and this is in like a hundred and five or something, so that's relatively the same, the benefits would be the same cost, and so that is how we proposed it on a, basically a cost-neutral approach. Again, we're saying there could be additional costs in assessing if we bring KRT in during the year to help with supervision and any other assessing work that needs to be done, but it would be less than the assessing manager's position, the chief assessor's position. And what we're proposing is that the administrative services director and get, and everyone else, get deeply involved in the, the department, so that we can report to you periodically as to what we think the needs are. I can tell you that since the audit was completed, and since the reorgan, at least the first step in the reorganization was implemented, that there have been many more meetings with the assessing department, very frequent meetings as to what's hap, you know, what's going on, how things are going, the morale and the organization of the department, and so I think that already we have seen changes and improvements in the assessing management.
Well said.
Thank you.
One question, I've been following the legislative process of Concord, which is, and it looks like there's a good possibility of some additional funding coming from the state, do we anticipate any of that in-
Well, in what, in what form? In what, in what?
One is pension costs, and the other is school construction aid.
Well, pension costs, I'd say is still, I mean, I don't want, I mean, sup, well, Representative Schmidt can fill us in as one of our primary, our leader up there on that issue, but, so maybe she could fill us in, but I think it still hasn't gone through House finance, so there's been no money attached to that, so it went through the House in principle, but no money at this point, right?
It's in the Finance Committee right now, it'll come back to the floor of the House, and we'll send it over to the Senate, and we'll keep our fingers crossed, knock on wood, and testify.
If that were successful, would that money come to the city in any form in 2020? FY20?
That's a good question, I do not know.
Depends what they, what they do, right? I mean, it depends when they say it would take effect.
It still has to pass the governor, and he's, he's told us that he's got a lot of red pens, so it's possible.
Item? A box of pens.
Okay. All right, so, next item on the agenda, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Next item on the agenda is general discussion. Anybody have any topic they want to talk about? No? All right, public comment? Or anyone that would like to address this in public comment? No? Remarks by Alderman? All right, we don't need a non-public, there are motion. Alderman Willschuh?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned at eight twenty-five.